Good evening and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council. My name is Mr. President, Councilman. It is Monday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. We begin today's meeting with the invocation of the Fudge of Allegiance led by Mr. Whitten. Please stand.
Please give us the wisdom to govern with a complete interest in issues of our times. Please give us the ability to better understand the wants and desires of our fellow citizens. May we have courage in our convictions and love for our family and in our hearts? And please help us together to form more advocacy. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce.
Present.
Mrs. Snee.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Severt.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Present.
Mr. Whitten.
Here.
Mrs. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. Rozell.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. This time we'll do an introduction of the members of the new class of Mayor's Youth Council.
Hey Doug, would you go grab the mayor, please?
I am the officer of the office.
Oh, God, I didn't see you. Oh, sorry.
Hi, my name is Ellie Roberts, and I'm from Haywood Elementary, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Michaela Monroe. I'm homeschooled, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Miller. I'm in fifth grade, and I go to St. Pat's Patrick School.
Hi, my name is Emma Davis, and I attend Concord Elementary.
Hi, my name is Lydia Westfield, and I also read at Concord.
Hi, my name is Emily, and I go to St. Patrick's.
Hi, my name is Jonah Eiffel, and I go to Concord Elementary.
Hi, my name is Carla Papasidaco, who go to elementary in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is.
Hi, my name is Alice, and I am here representing the Miami Montessori School.
Hi, my name is Steven Hilton, and I go to Forest Elementary.
Hi, my name is Jasmine, and I go to Forest Elementary.
Hi, my name is Blair, and I go to Haywood Elementary.
Oh, my name, oh, my name is Nick Spann, and I go to Cookston Elementary.
Is that a relationship to you all?
One more picture, and I'll let you go.
Then you get to home if you're home.
Yeah, you got to go home. Hey, welcome, welcome, before I say the council.
Yeah, I'm ready to go and get a picture with him since you're.
I have another picture.
We take a picture.
So, that's good, all right. More of you, more of council is in the photo than realized, so.
She's getting up, trying to get to.
Thank you.
These are you guys got.
If you can say that you want to shave the entire.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you, guys. Thanks, students, we hope you all have a wonderful year here. A little off the stage, you wish. Take a quick pause as we all exit the room.
We had a really good trip last year, a lot of fun.
Okay, we'll resume the meeting as, Mrs. Knight, please read the minutes, last meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of council, October three, twenty twenty-two. There was an executive session. Committee reports, Finance Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for the fleet maintenance program. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared for an urban canopy restoration grant application. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing easement agreement for an encroachment into the alley north of the building known as the Mayflower Arts Theater. Resolution number R sixty-four, twenty twenty-two, bid for fleet maintenance program, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R sixty-five, twenty twenty-two, application through the Division of Forestry's Urban Forestry Assistance Program, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R sixty-six, twenty twenty-two, agreement with International Association of Firefighters, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O six fifty-two, twenty twenty-two, approving an easement agreement for an encroachment, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O fifty-three, twenty twenty-two, final plat Fox Harbor subdivision. Section nine, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O fifty-four, twenty twenty-two, wages and salaries of certain employees, the I F F represented employees, first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjutant at seven thirty-seven.
Let's council, Mr. Stone, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Sir, rules without the minutes on Mr. Twist, Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee. Yes. Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll move on to committee reports. We have three committee reports. We began with the community and the committee and Mr. Schilling.
Thank you. This committee met on October tenth for a discussion on the request from the Troy Story Preservation Alliance that the number of planning commission members be increased by two and that priority be given to ensure that a total of three planning commission members have certain skill sets. Several citizens spoke in this regard. Committee members noted that the meeting purpose was to hear comments and that no recommendation would be made at that time. This was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling, as chair.
And Mr. Schilling, any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll watch the Recreation and Parks Committee, Mr. Whitten.
Mr. President, this committee met on October tenth to consider a recommendation to transfer the property known as Waco Park to the Community Improvement Corporation so that the CIC may market the property. This property was declared surplus in twenty twenty, but no bids were received when the property was advertised for sale. The Board of Park Commission has recommended the transfer of the property to the CIC, and the CIC has agreed to accept and market the parcels, subject to Troy City Council's approval of the transfer. It is the recommendation that legislation be prepared authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy to transfer parcels D O eight two five oh three five three and D O eight two five oh three five four, known as Waco Park, to the Community Improvement Corporation of the City of Troy, Ohio, so that the CIC can market the parcels on behalf of the board. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll finish up our course now with the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir. This committee met also on October ten to consider authorizing a grant application for funding for the Experiment Farm Road Resurfacing Project. The city may qualify for a grant up to six hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars for this project, which has a current estimate of approximately one point two million. The project area and scope are outlined in the detailed report. This grant is being administered through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. And it is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to submit a grant application for the federal I I I J A funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for the Experiment Farm Road Resurfacing Project and to execute any related documents. Based on the application deadline, the committee supports emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, any other citizens or comments or committee reports items on the agenda? We have one resolution to ordinance this on our agenda this evening. If you wish to speak to council on any of those items, you're all in the podium, you have an address. You have two minutes to address council, Mr. Curber is at our table here. Seeing none, we want resolutions. Yes, Mrs. Knight, you know the resolution of the evening, resolution R sixty-seven, twenty twenty-two.
Resolution number R sixty-seven, twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the submission of applications for federal I I I J A funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for the Experiment Farm Road Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mr. Whitten, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It is moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we ask you to read the first ordinance of the evening, ordinance O fifty-five, twenty twenty-two.
Ordinance number O fifty-five, twenty twenty-two, ordinance authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, Ohio, regarding the sale of parcels D O eight two five oh three five three and D O eight two five oh three five four, on behalf of the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy, Ohio. These parcels are commonly known as Waco Park, first reading.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Whitten, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Whitten, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last ordinance of the evening, ordinance O fifty-six, twenty twenty-two?
Ordinance number O fifty-six, twenty twenty-two, ordinance amending ordinance number O sixty-five, twenty twenty-one, as amended by ordinance number O thirty, twenty twenty-two, appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the City of Troy, Ohio, for the year twenty twenty-two. This is the second routine reappropriation as recommended by the city auditor, first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Whitten.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Move on to communications and announcements. Mrs. Knight, do I have any?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Any comments, officials, Mayor Oda?
I only have a question. Is Lisa Failure here tonight? Okay, she was our recycling award winner, and we didn't know for sure that she would be here tonight. I just wanted to make sure, because I wasn't sure who I was looking for. Other than that, I have no comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington.
So I know you've been waiting with bated breath, but I'll give the announcement again. This will be the last time for this year. October twenty-seventh, Thursday night, is trick or treat.
Yeah.
Six to eight.
Raiders side.
Today, we did start leaf pickup. It's a big day. The map is online, weather permitting. Sometimes we can do it quicker than others. I see the piles starting to pile up. I think the leaves are falling a little earlier than they have in the last couple of years. So just ask people to be patient. We will get to, to the house, to your house, multiple times, not just once. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Titterington. Director of Law, Mr. Curber.
Mr. President, I don't have anything to add this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curber. Any council members have any comments this evening? Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir. I submitted several questions to Mr. Titterington, and for time's sake, do you want to just go down and listen and answer those instead of asking each question?
So number one, yes, number two, no. I'm here all week.
Yeah, unfortunately.
The Duck Bank contract was authorized at one point five million. The contract we awarded was one million one hundred and eighty thousand. The Kid or Ditch, as part of the consultant's work, they will be having an educational program put together. We will take that and put it into some quick and easy marketing pieces for, for folks along the Kid or Ditch so that they know what they can and can't do and should and shouldn't do.
And that would apply to any, almost any ditch that we have where there is private property ownership in those ditches so that we could distribute that if necessary.
Correct. The generator for Station eleven is still, you know, wait and see. The last that we got was sometime in November, remains to be seen. We have four water towers, and we have a clear well at the water plant. With all of those, we have a storage capacity of five point two five million gallons. That is approximately one and a quarter's day worth of storage. The Ohio Environmental Protection Agency recommends one day or more, so we are above what is recommended. And finally, you mentioned the P D section, the Police Department section, it's actually in the Fire Department section. It is thirty-seven thousand dollars for some bodywork to a company called Lumpkin. That was an accident that was not, we were not at fault, and so the insurance company is repaying for that. But since it was such a large amount and the, there were delays or have been delays in getting reimbursed, we, we paid for it, and we know we will get reimbursed through the insurance company.
Got it, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other council members have any questions or comments this evening? Do any staff members have any comments or questions this evening? We now open up for audience comments or questions. If you wish to address council on any topic, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Good evening, I'm Valerie Mulliken. I'm actually a Pickwa resident, actually a Washington Township resident. I am also the director of a veterans nonprofit here in Miami County that's just three years young, Operation Veteran and Caregiver Support. And I brought some brochures for your council this evening so that you will each have one. We established to assist veterans and their caregivers and their families in connecting to the resources that they've earned. We empower them to use those resources in order to improve their quality of life. You guys have heard the tales of, no, they're not tales, they're the realities of our veterans community suffering from a lack of services, from a lack of knowledge, and from a lack of support. And I am the wife of a totally disabled veteran, and I'm also the mom of four veterans. I had to stop to think about that, my apologies. And this was something that has been very deep in my heart for many, many years. As a caregiver, I suffer from a lack of resources for many, many years, and as a result, I said, I gotta do something about this. So looking to see what we had in our area, it was very limited, but we have a tremendous community, not just in our cities and our counties, but in our nation. The problem is, is people just don't know what they don't know. And they don't know what they can connect to besides the Veterans Administration, which many have problems with, and our county veteran service offices, which again, people have struggles with. They associate it with not getting quality care. We aim to change that, and we actually have been doing that. Through collaboration with the county veteran service offices and community organizations, businesses, and just community members in general, we have uncovered a whole host of fun things. We have been working with the Dayton VA Medical Center in the last five months, very deeply on a program that we are getting ready to launch here in Miami County after the first of the year, which is one of the reasons why I came here tonight. That will be a suicide prevention coalition. Miami County does not have a veterans suicide prevention coalition, and the Dayton VA Medical Center has been trying diligently for a little while now, more than a year, to get something going and have not been able to be successful at it. We met at the Miami County Fair and embarked on this journey together, and so we will be contacting your city council in January with a stakeholders meeting where we would like to have representative from our communities, a representative from area businesses and organizations to step in. What we have done in our research recently is discovered that this is going to be a tri-county effort, because Shelby County and Dark County also do not have programs. And what we're finding is many of the organizations that will be collaborative partners and stakeholders are actually encompassing those three counties, so it will be a tri-county mission. We did some research, and we discovered that according to Miami County Auditor's Office, about twenty-seven residents in the county, not just each individual city, but county, are receiving the Homestead Act. The Homestead Act is a tax benefit on property taxes for a hundred percent disabled veterans that are permanent and total disabled. That number is a very, very low number in comparison to the number of veterans that the Ohio Census says reside here in Miami County, which is around seven thousand veterans. So we know that there's some work to do there. The county veteran service office has estimated there's about six thousand veterans here, and the Dayton VA Medical Center says we don't even have thirty-five hundred residents in the, in the county that are veterans. So we have a lot of work to do, and we're here to embark, all of you, on this journey with us to connect our veterans to the resources they've earned, empower them to use them to change the quality of their life. We launched a program shortly after learning about a veteran who struggled with alcohol called the mustard mingle, and I would invite all of you to join us. We meet the last Wednesday of the month, unfortunately for Troy, we meet in Tip City, and the reason for that is because we were able to strike a really good deal with the Tip Center. At that meeting, we invite, we invite our veterans and their families to come in. They enjoy a meal at no cost, and then we have a guest speaker, and the rest of the evening, they get to just be in the community of other veterans and socialize, much like they would do at a VFW, American Legion AMV, DAV. But without the alcohol, so it's a family event. We launched, soft-launched in December, had one veteran who said, gosh, I hope more veterans show up. We had a handful of veterans in January, and by the end of May, we were at capacity of fifty. Little did I know that that would even grow beyond that. I should have known, but God moves in mysterious ways, and our last mustard mingle, we were set up. When we got there, the Tip Center had set up for, had it set up for a previous engagement, and they just left it set up for sixty-six people, and I was really worried that we wouldn't have those numbers to support the guest speaker who was traveling about forty-five minutes to that event. And I was like, this is not going to be good if people don't show up tonight, because we don't do reservations. You just come, come as you are. Five o'clock is when dinner begins, and people start mingling in, and guest speaker starts around six, and then the rest of the evening is just a chat. We served sixty-two last month in September, so we are growing. It's a program that's been requested. We've been requested to launch in Shelby County and Montgomery County. Unfortunately, we're not at the capacity with volunteers where we're able to do that. We've had a couple organizations approach us about utilizing our mustard mingle programming, and we're starting to have that conversation with them because we see that there's a need for veterans to have a safe place to go, where there's no alcohol or substances or gambling involved, where they can just go as a family and they can have a nice dinner and be in the company of others. There's nothing like the military veteran culture, and so if you are not familiar with it, it's a different culture, right, Mayor Oda? Very different culture. But we want these people integrated and, and working within our communities too, so that's why I would encourage you, if you want to come and join us, please do so, our doors are open to you. I'm also going to leave you with this card, and I would ask you, and anybody in the audience that wants one, this is a veterans crisis line card. I ask each of you to put one in your pocket. Even if it's somebody that's not a veteran and they have a crisis, they can still cry out, call this crisis hotline number. The only difference is if they're a veteran, they press option one. And we've come up with a national number, if you're not familiar, it's nine eight eight. And so they can also do that, but many times, you'll get somebody that's in a crisis and they're just not sure what to think, and there are some things to recognize, the suicide risk on the back of this card. So I ask you to please put this in your wallet or your purse, keep it with you, because you never know when you're going to encounter somebody in crisis, and they don't necessarily have to be suicidal to use this crisis line. They can be connected to many great resources just because they need that. You know, somebody maybe is involved in domestic violence and they're escaping domestic violence. You can use this crisis line to help them get connected. Not everywhere that we have two-on-one works as expediently as this crisis line. So I will leave these with you also tonight. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Do you have a phone number or email that you're going to leave with Mrs. Knight?
I do, it's right here on my brochure, so I will make sure she has one of those. I will also add that we are going to have a open house up at the Pickwa, behind the Pickwa Mall at the Plaza, next Tuesday evening, from four to eight o'clock, where we will also have additional information if anybody wants to come. Again, we were able to strike a really good deal to get us through the next three months with our Thanksgiving and our Christmas support for our veterans, which encompasses Miami, Montgomery, Dark, Shelby, and Clark Counties.
Please, I'm going to call you. I got a connection with another organization that you might want to hear about.
Absolutely, I would love to, I would love to talk to you, engage in that conversation. We love to partner, and by the way, we don't help just veterans right here. We help veterans anywhere in the United States, from California to Texas to Georgia to Florida, Michigan, and I had one. And I had one call me, a family call me from Japan, and so we're the organization that just finds a needle in a haystack, makes those 40 phone calls for you, and then gets you to that single person so you don't have to make those phone calls and be frustrated. So, thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
Does anyone, anyone else wish to address council tonight? Please come to the podium and give your name and address.
My name is Deb Hogshead. I live at 421 South Plum Street here in Troy. I'm a volunteer with Move to Amend Miami County and affiliate of the National Nonpartisan Nonprofit Coalition known as Move to Amend. We're promoting an amendment to the U.S. Constitution that makes clear two things: only natural persons, not corporate entities chartered by the state, have constitutional rights, and two, money spent on politics is not protected speech and shall be regulated. Tonight, I'm here to comment on Troy's electricity aggregate program. Specifically, I want to make council and Troy citizens aware of the current electricity vendor's history and to encourage council to consider alternatives. Electricity for Troy's current aggregation program is supplied by Energy Harbor, which owns several nuclear power plants, including Davis-Bessie and Perry. As I understand it, the contract with Energy Harbor ends April 30, 2023. Energy Harbor is the new name of First Energy Solutions, which declared bankruptcy in April 2018 and emerged in February 2020 with its new name. First Energy Solutions was once a subsidiary of First Energy Corporation, the company behind the $60 million public corruption scandal, the largest in Ohio history, involving Representative Larry Householder, his nonprofit Generation Now, and House Bill 6, signed into law by Governor Dewine in July 2019, with the purpose of bailing out the Davis-Bessie and Perry nuclear power plants, as well as subsidizing two coal plants, one in Ohio and one in Indiana. In March 2021, the governor signed into law House Bill 128, repealing that part of House Bill 6 covering the nuclear power plant bailout. The bill did not, however, repeal the coal subsidies also covered under House Bill 6. While Energy Harbor is now independent of First Energy Corporation, its past relationship goes to show the lengths at which a large corporation will go to influence elections and legislation that benefit itself over Ohio rate payers and citizens seeking safer, cleaner, renewable sources of energy. I'm no expert on electricity aggregation programs, and I don't know how Troy goes about deciding on a vendor with whom to contract for electricity aggregation. However, I would like to ask council to consider alternatives. One alternative is the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, or SOPEC, formed in 2014 with a commitment to renewable energy and as an alternative to private brokers. I have information to share about SOPEC, and I know that Philip Lupla, SOPEC's Southwest Ohio Director and in-house counsel, is happy to give presentations to interested municipalities. Finally, I'd like to ask council and Troy residents to reflect on where power, political power resides at all levels of government and whom that political power benefits. Does it reside with voters, as in a government of, by, and for the people, or does it reside with major corporations and those people with money to influence elections and public policy? Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address council tonight? Seeing none, we thank you for attending this evening. This meeting is now adjourned. Our next meeting will be November 7, 2022, 7:00 p.m. here in Troy, Council of the Council. Thank you for attending.